Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, January 21st meeting of the school board, our planning meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Vanco, could we have roll call?
Mr. Emig?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mrs. Metford?
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Rauchser?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
And Mr. Cook?
Here.
Thank you. One member absent.
Okay, first item on our agenda is public comment. If there's anybody that would wish to speak tonight, you may come up to the microphone. Anyone for public comment? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda would be Board President's Communication. We did have an executive session immediately following Tuesday night's board meeting, the 19th, for legal and personnel matters. That is all I have to communicate at this time. Next up are committee reports. The first one will be comprehensive planning. Mrs. Maylie?
Hi. We received an email from the Pennsylvania Department of Education that our comprehensive plan has been approved, which is very good news. We talked about our three goals and focused on the school culture goal with respect to creating a survey for the stakeholders. So, some of the questions for our planning committee and the board is, you know, how to best organize the survey? Do we create separate surveys for each group of staff, parents, community members, students? Is the purpose of the survey to get a general overview of the stakeholders' perceptions of the school district? Or do we want it more specific to the school buildings and departments? And what is the best way to get the news of the survey out to non-parent community members? Obviously, we have Global Connect and lots of other means for our students and the parents that are currently in our district, but how do we get it out there for the community at large? Some of the suggestions in organizing the survey is, you know, we want a limited number of purposeful questions. We want to get the most meaningful information out of the survey as possible. We will have a general comment section at the end, but no open-ended questions, no comment section after each question. We'd like to aim for April 1st to release the survey and have it available online for one month. And obviously, for those who don't have access to computers or prefer paper and pencil, they could get that in some other way. Reaching out to community members, Dover Borough and Township, Washington Township, newsletters or building notices, posting local businesses or community locations, advertising on marquees, even possibly in the high school marquee, something about taking our survey, Facebook and Twitter, different community events. And we all agree that we need to be thoughtful as to how the survey is introduced and explained to the stakeholders so that people understand that we're not just doing this to do a survey, that we really and truly want to make improvements to our district and, you know, so we want them to know that upfront and be very clear with our reasons for doing this. Our next steps, the committee, we will review questions over the next month and each of us will provide questions that we think are important to Kathy Guyer by February 16th, and she will compile and review and create a preliminary survey for board perusal. And then we're looking to March, to the March board meeting for approval of the survey so that we can get it out.
Do any board members have any questions or concerns for Mrs. Maylie or the committee? Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee. That would be Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Herman.
Okay, first, I'm going to apologize. Mrs. Allman had transcribed notes for us, but unfortunately, I can't find them. So, I'm going to need ad hoc here with them. One of the first things we talked about was the draft calendar for the 2016-2017 school year. Tentatively, we had looked at the week of August 15th. Teachers would be coming in that week for professional development. And with the first student day of being August 22nd. A different setup of the calendar this year, or for next school year, that we looked at was loading the school makeup days, um, snow makeup days, excuse me, to the end of the year. So, instead of having them built in throughout the year, we would just continue on throughout the year, and then any additional snow makeup days would be tacked on at the end of the year. So, without, well, we'll go on there. We did talk about throughout the year, some additional time off. There was a large discussion on the day before Thanksgiving that was primarily used for clerical work. A lot of discussion concerning, was that the most appropriate use of that day and what were we, you know, looking for that day to be used? A lot of it was decided to be, I guess, conference days, especially in elementary schools, and then questions were asked, and what would happen with parents who needed evening hours. So, we talked about, you know, how we could manage that and using that as flex time. Another issue that we came up with was on the draft schedule, we had them coming back on the Monday after Thanksgiving and had a lot of question, I questioned whether or not that was a probably a good idea with the rural nature of the Dover community and the fact that that is the first day of hunting season. So, we're looking at whether or not to use that Monday as a day off again. With doing that, we would then look at it, with having that Monday off, we would look at being student last day being May 25th. So, it actually, we would actually, without school days, be getting out before Memorial Day. So, kind of a trade-off, coming back a little bit earlier, again, starting the summer vacation a little bit earlier on that. We made these changes. We're going to send them back to administration for them to take a look at, and then hopefully we'll have it on for the February meeting for approval.
So, are you looking for, with your changes, there to be like an option A, an option B, and an option C? Meaning that option A is what you have, option B would be allowing hunting the first day of buck season to still be included. I know something we've always talked about is the ability to flex time, so I think we built that into November, the week of November 14th, so they would have an entire week. I think that's prior to that clerical day.
Yes.
So, we would be deliberate about putting that out ahead of time so that teachers would know that during back-to-school night, they could go ahead and begin to schedule those evening appointments during that, too. So, that would be, that would actually be placed on the calendar so that people would understand that they would have that time.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can, based on your notes, we'll build like kind of the option A, option B, and C for you guys to consider for board vote, so.
Next, we talked about, and again, I apologize, I don't have any of the notes, so I only took really scarce notes here. Policy 127 came from PSS, oh, I'm sorry, PSBA, and this is concerning student assessment. Currently, we have a policy 127 as well as a policy 213 that pretty much deal with the same issue. PSBA has come out and has suggested replacing, or I should say deleting, policy 213 and replacing it solely with policy 127. We felt that that was probably a good idea and have recommended that move on to board vote in its February meeting. Along with that, we did take a look at policy 217 concerning graduation requirements. Again, this came from PSBA. Has clear language as well as, has basic language and then some options for us for different language that we could also include. We've asked that we be given an extra month to just be able to review that policy some more and to see which added language we'd like to see included in that. So, we will take a look at, the committee will take a look at in February and then forward our recommendation after that. And then finally, I had asked Ms. Jackson to give us an update on where they were, where they are at currently with the new curriculum development, I guess you would call it, or analyzing the curriculum that we have, and she did give us a nice overview. I could not do it justice. So, she's currently with a parent right now. When she is finished with that, I've asked her to come back, and if we could afford her an opportunity at some point during any meeting to give us an overview on that as well. They have done a lot of work, I believe, in the past several months, and I'd like to have the rest of the board hear what's going on with that. In a nutshell, that's about it, without my notes, so.
Any questions from board members, from Mr. Delauter or Mrs. Herman? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is Facilities Committee. That would be Mr. Emig and Mr. Rauchser.
Okay. There were quite a number of things that we had discussed tonight. Some of these are back from the previous committee of the Safe and Supportive Schools. Just to let you know that one of the items from last year was the high school lighting. That has been completed. There are now two LSD lights on each side of the ward auditorium, and that was done mostly in-house, and it cost less than $250 to put them two lights up. So, now the exterior of the auditorium entrance has now extra lighting. The second item was the marquee. Currently, the class of 2014 has contributed almost $3,000, and we were looking, we're looking for the community to contribute money towards helping to pay for this. And I guess another comment was that the Dover Eagle Foundation, if there's anything that they possibly could do for that as well. So, as of now, marquee is still in discussion mode. Student parking lot. I know it was brought up to put an extra exit, so we discussed that tonight, and the problem we have with that is that when you, at the high school, you have one entrance going up past the old administration building. You have another exit going down around the student parking lot, past the practice field to the alley, and exiting that way. The problem, if you put a third one in, would be on the other side of the administration building. But the problem they have there is, there's a drainage ditch. You'd have to put all-new piping, which would probably cost $5,000 to do. And then the other thing is, you would get a backup of traffic coming out of these exits because you already have two exit points. They're all trying to go out, you'd have a third exit, so you'd have a jam up. One way that, possibility of eliminating that is if you get fire police or police down at the corner of the alley where the gas station is to have the traffic stop so the cars can keep coming out so we don't have a backup. So, that's where we are at this point. We don't, at this point, we don't know if it'll be feasible to put in a third exit unless you have a no-turning left coming out on the front side of the old admin building, and everybody has to go right. So, that's the problem we have as far as the third additional exit for the student parking lot. We talked about a new high school. Just let me bring up that this is just talking. We're not going to implement a new high school tomorrow. We're not implementing a new high school the end of this year. This is just talking. I know that people see me out in the community and say, "Oh, I hear you're building a new high school." It's just in talking mode. A possible location we had discussed is possibly behind the intermediate school, which would take, we could put a new high school in the back where the parking lot is, where the soccer field, the ball field, and possibly where the current pool is. You could put in a new high school. But this is just talking. Of course, the other thing is, do we have enough students to fill the buildings? That would be the other thing. So, it's just a talking mode that we had discussed. Those are the possibilities where you could put, because behind the intermediate school to North Salem is swampland, so it's difficult to go any further. Mr. Nelson had went out and took measurements and said, "This is a possibility where you could put it." So, we're just talking about it, nothing more at this point. High school windows. If you go past the high school, if you're coming from the football field, heading towards the square, and if you look up at the very top of the building, you'll see some new windows have already been installed. Mr. Nelson said they are excellent. They're heat, they save on heat. He's looking at the completion of all the windows at the high school to be completed by April, which are cost of $430,000. We also discussed about the elementary reconfiguration building, reconfiguration, and of course, the one question I have from Mr. Cherry is, do we have any public meetings planned for this?
Currently, we don't. If we remember, the configuration was really stemmed from the questions that we received about what we would do with, if we had an increase in enrollment. So, I think that the question that we need to actually really tackle first is, if we would like to build a new facility, how would we utilize the facilities afterwards? Because hypothetically, as you said, if we were just talking, if we were to build a new high school, let's say, behind the middle school and move the middle school to the high school, and truly make it a middle school of sixth, seventh, and eighth, that would alleviate a lot of space at all of our elementarys. So, the question then becomes, do we need to reconfigure the buildings if we're eliminating, you know, on average, 75 to 100 students from the building? So, I think before we start scheduling meetings about reconfiguration, I think we actually need to decide as a board about what our future is in terms of facilities, because I think the facilities will drive that conversation. And my thinking around that is, if you're going to reconfigure, it might make more sense to reconfigure at the time that you do facilities as well, so it's all done at one time and not move kits here, build here, and then move kits again. So, I just, I think we need to come together as a board to make that decision first before we establish community meetings, and we're not quite sure how to answer their questions either.
Okay.
So, that would be my recommendation.
And along with that, the next item was, it was mentioned that a feasibility study would be done by Crabtree-Roarball at no cost, and do we know when this might happen?
We just got to send, Mr. Nelson and I had to work together and just send back some of our ideas about if we were to do that, what we would like to have in terms of ideal space at a middle school, ideal space at a high school, and then they'll start doing that. So, that's something that he and I can begin to work on and send that information in.
Okay. I want to back up to the high school windows. Mr. Nelson, do you want to update us on what has been completed and where we go from here?
Currently, we have two classrooms on the second floor that are completed. We finished the one this afternoon, or late this morning. I think they're 204 and 205, I believe are the two numbers. As you're coming from, if you're coming up Canal Road from the township building towards the square, if you look up to your right, you'll see the top two that were replaced. It's probably eight windows in each classroom, so. We have that completed. We have what they refer to as a bridge, which connects the really old part of the high school, which is where the office is, to the section they built right after that on the second floor. Those windows were, anybody here from the high school can attest to this, when it rained, it poured in. So, they were leaking really bad. We put those in Friday and Monday of last week, and my perception is, it is so much warmer in that hall since we did that. It is, it's just unbelievable. These two classrooms we did are the same way. You walk in there and it's bright, it's warm, it's like a totally different school. It's just totally different. We've also done, one of the computer labs, I believe it's 109 on the first floor, there were six windows, single, like a single wide window we put in, so there's a couple windows you can see that are finished over there. Tomorrow, we're going to concentrate on a set of windows that are in a stairwell back in that same, like, corner, if you will. So, our goal is to get that section done, first and second floor, next week, and then move on to what we call the courtyard area, will be probably where we go next. So, we've got, that's a lot of work. So, what we do is, we take two classrooms, we relocate them to empty classrooms that are in the basement, so kids aren't going outside in the weather, they're not, you know, getting into cold or the rain or whatever. They're staying in the high school. We just relocate the teacher and the students, and they work out of those classrooms for a week at a time, and then we'll move them back in. So, once we get the windows installed, we'll get them measured for blinds, and we'll get blinds up the window. Right now, we don't have anything to measure to and from because we don't have all the trim, so to speak, up, so we have to wait till we get that done to do some measurements there, but we'll get those on order. So, we've pretty much assured the teachers that's going to happen. We just bear with us, it's going to take a little time. So, it's going extremely well for as cold as it is, and to give you an idea, we put the first room we did on Tuesday, Wednesday, and if you remember, Tuesday was in 14, 15 degree range. The room never got below 43 degrees. So, we kept it pretty, pretty stable. So, you can't really tell there's a difference in the hallway, so you're not like the kids are going up and down the hall and it's freezing in the hall. We're keeping the doors shut, and it gets a little cool in the room, but doesn't get cold in the hallway, so we're maintaining temperatures there. So, any questions? Now, I'll try, what I'll try to do is, next time, I'll try and have some, maybe some pictures for you at the next meeting, so kind of see what we're doing, give you an idea, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. The other, I have two more items. The other one is, it was discussed about when the public may get building tours, when that may take place. Do you have any idea when that may happen, or?
I was hoping that the committee would come with dates.
Okay.
If not, then we can certainly work on getting those dates established, so.
All right. And just one positive comment, all of our buildings have now secure entrances, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Emig. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Emig or the committee? Okay, next will be Human and Fiscal Resources, and Mrs. Metford's absence, I will take care of that. First item on the agenda that we discussed was the LIU operating budget for 2016 and 17. We will be sending that for board approval at the February 16th meeting. There were no significant changes from the prior year, and the budget does appear to be fiscally conservative and responsible. Very little changes there. The next item was the York Adams Academy operating budget for 2016 and 17. We will also send that for board approval at the February 16th meeting. The budget is decreasing $71,000 from the prior year. That is due to some staffing cuts. There will be no salary increases for anybody. Our membership fee remains at $4,100 per seat. We do have 12 seats at the academy, and I believe we have all 12 of those filled at this time. Next item on the agenda was the Life Touch agreement for the school photos. We discussed various packages being offered for the 16, 17 school year, and we are being offered the choice between a one-year or a three-year agreement. We are recommending that the board approve a three-year agreement at the February meeting. We have heard that there's been a very good performance by Life Touch. There really haven't been any issues, and the issues that have come up have been effectively addressed by the company, and we've used them for a very long time, and their pricing has been very reasonable with this new agreement as well. So, that'll be on the agenda next month. Next item is Conrad Segal. Will be coming to our February planning meeting to do a presentation for the board on our medical and dental trends and our costs and analysis with that. It's a huge piece of our budget, and it's going to be good information for us to all have in front of us as we move forward with some of our budgeting processes. So, be prepared for that presentation next month. 2014 and 15 audit update. The audit is complete, and they are completing the report right now. That will go to the board for approval in February 16th meeting as well. Early indications show that there are no findings this time around, so that is great news, and there's some really positive changes that have happened there. So, again, you'll get that in advance of the meeting to review, and then we'll have that in February's meeting. We had some conversations regarding the fund balance designations and restrictions. We will be asking the board for approval to move $4.3 million from our general fund to a restricted capital fund for capital projects that may be coming up in the future. You may recall, at Tuesday night's meeting, Mr. Kegy did a presentation on our current status with our general fund. We actually exceed the limits that the state would like to see on how much money you have in your general fund. They prefer to have about 8% of your expenses in general fund, and we have about 18%. So, it would be in our best interest to move some of these dollars into a restricted capital fund for future and current building needs that we might have. So, we'll be coming to the board for approval on that. We also discussed the investment portfolio options. Pizzliff has been consulted to take a look at the monies that we do have available for investment, to see how we can maximize our investments and our interest earnings on those. We will be looking at how to ladder some of the maturities of those investments so that if we do have expenses that come up or investments that we need to make in facilities, we can stagger those so those funds are accessible to us. So, we will be coming with some information on that as well going ahead. And then we did add one item to the agenda, and that is a job description that will be coming to the board for approval in February. This would be for a technology integration specialist. This person or persons would be responsible for helping to implement the one-to-one initiative across the district. These would be professional-level positions. Ideally, teachers would be taking these and assisting staff in integrating the technology into their classrooms. So, you will see that job description coming out for approval at next month's meeting. That was all we had on our agenda. Are there any questions for me on those items?
Just, I have just one. On the restricted capitals account, we wanted to move 4.?
4.3 million.
And do we know what that would take us to as far as the amount in that, that account?
It just requires board approval for restriction of funds, fund balance.
Okay. But how much would we have in that? Do we, like, what would that account?
What's the total on that?
Was it totally in that account?
The total on the general fund or the capital projects?
The capital.
Capital projects fund. At the end of 14, 15, had approximately $6.9 million in it. So, if we add the $4 million, that'll, it'll be about $10 million, 10, almost $11 million reserved for capital projects at that point. We do also use those monies for renovations of buildings, for example, the new windows. We use money out of the capital project reserves for that, so it's not just for new facilities or anything like that. Those funds definitely are used for keeping up any infrastructure. We did use some of the funds in the capital projects for our switches, for our network, and things like that. So, anything infrastructure-related, that's funds that we use.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we do that without having a specific purpose for those funds? Can you move, is it okay to move funds into that account without having, you know, like a plan for those funds, or do they have to be used within a certain amount of time?
Your, your specific purpose for that is capital projects. That is your specific purpose. In the capital projects fund, you can then take those restricted funds and say, "We're going to use this much for infrastructure, and we're going to use this much for, you know, renovations," or whatever it might be.
Are there any restrictions, once it's in the capital reserve fund, about the length of time with which you have to use them?
No.
No?
Any other questions? Okay, next is Safe and Supportive Schools. Mr. Cook?
Committee met this evening, and we had a lengthy conversation with, in regards to the clearance update and information. We had a community member who joined us who had shared some concerns that she had at the, I believe it was the November board meeting, and we discussed those concerns. But to give the board an update on where we're at with the clearances, as you recall, there was quite a few changes along the way last year as new rules were made and then were changed, and changed again, and changed again, and learned a few things new this, tonight in our meeting that I hadn't even known then, last year. So, just to give the board an update, as far as employees and professional staff, administrators and so on and so forth, substitute teachers, all three clearances that are part of Act 153 are now in place. The period of time with which they're valid has been increased from three years to five years. years now, so that re-upping the clearance process is now a five-year process. And Dave Consino had updated our committee and I'll update you that we're in one hundred percent of compliance at this point. All of our staff members and administrators and so on and so forth have performed at those clearances, so we're a hundred percent there. As far as volunteers, it's a little bit different. The volunteers have to go through two of the three clearances and only have to go through the FBI fingerprint background check if they haven't lived within the state here, I believe it's for ten years. So, for most volunteers, they'll only have the two. For the volunteers, those clearances are free. There's no, no cost to them, the state has waived those, those costs. Volunteers who volunteer for the first time still have to do the TB test and that's a one-time thing and that still is, is applicable. There is a cost to that, that the volunteer will, will pay, somewhere in the range of about twenty-seven dollars and that's done outside of our facilities here through a place like Concentra. That also is now a five-year process. Once that is completed, there is a timetable of having all volunteers go through that process by July first of two thousand and sixteen. It's still important, it was noted that volunteers do stay involved, that they are involved at least once a year to keep those clearances active, even in light of the fact that every five years they've got to renew it. It still is important, I want to make sure the volunteers know that, that they're not getting their clearances and not staying involved, so that's an important note. We had a lengthy discussion about some alternative TB testing. There is multiple ways in which TB testing can be done, can be done the normal skin prick way and like most of, of people have it done, probably if you've had it done, that's the way you've had it done. There also is a blood test that you can have done as well. However, the firm that we, the outfit that we partner with, Concentra, does not allow that to be done in place of, in other words, to under our school plan and at the school's cost. So, unfortunately, if anyone wants to have that test done in an alternative way, they certainly can do it and the school will honor it, the district will honor it as a valid test, but it is a rather expensive alternative. So, that was the, the main point of the concern that the parent had and unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do about it. Concentra was not willing to give us a discounted rate and it's pretty, it's like six or seven times the cost, so. So, as far as the updates are concerned, we still have policies that need updated in regards to Act one fifty-three. The next step is for sort of a, a look at all our policies that are related, are related to clearances and get that information together so we can do them collectively all at once with the Board Docs program now that we're using. It's going to make the process a whole lot easier. So, we'll be working on that, bringing that to you hopefully in the, in the near future, so we're, we're working to get that resolved. The other items that were on our agenda, we just briefly talked about, just to bring them up, we were asked to look at two specific policies. The, the training staff, our sports training staff, had asked us to take a look at policy two oh, two oh three point one and eight twenty-two, not because there's any specific issues, but because they haven't been updated for thirteen years and they are in the process of doing an application for our school to receive a potential award and probably should be something as, as supporting documentation, maybe we take a look at that. And there may be a few other policies around the two oh three point that we want to take a look at, so we're going to continue to look at those next month. There was a concern brought to us very briefly about the, the age of our school vans and from a safety standpoint, might be something that we're going to want to look at that in the near future. So, again, that will be carried on to next month's committee agenda as well, so that's, that's where we're at at this point.
Steve, were you given sample policies for the two oh three and the twenty-two? Did you, were you able to pull those from Board Docs or, or updated ones at PSBA?
Yes, we didn't really get into them too much, but Devana had brought those to our meeting and we're going to continue, we're going to look at those from different school districts that have.
Because Amy can push those out to you in draft form so you can fix them right there in Board Docs and then we can send it right to legal. So, we'll make sure we get that for your next meeting, so that way you're not recreating the will, you can actually just put the information right in.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cook? Okay, moving on, our technology committee, Mr. DeChau.
Yes, we were looking at for our agenda, policy eight one five, the acceptable use of computer technology. Basically, we want to take a look at it, see if we want to modify it. We also want to use the Board Docs, we want to look up the other school districts, compare all of the York County school districts to ours to see what theirs are and compare them, see if we want to modify it, add or get stuff for that. We also want to get feedback from our schools to see what technology disadvantages we need, things with that nature. We also had a side discussion about Skyward and the direction it's going right now. Really, that's, that's everything we talked about.
In terms of the technology feedback, were you looking to do more of a technology survey or just?
Basically, from an acceptable use policy, some of the issues they might be running into.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whether it be at the IS or one of the elementary schools, because obviously, different grade levels are going to have different issues or whatever, just to see if there's any issues that they have encountered recently that the AAP currently doesn't look at.
Gotcha, okay.
Any questions for Mr. DeChau? Okay, next up would be the weather report, also known as the superintendent's report tonight.
Well, I'll start off with good news. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go downtown York to Junior Achievement for the Future Leaders of York and I had lunch with Anna Becker and Alexandria Giovanni. So, it was a great hour, other superintendents joined us, but it was, it was a good opportunity to see not only our two students, but students from all over York County kind of coming together to talk about leadership and what that actually entails. So, it was great hearing their struggles as they were trying to talk about an idea and how do they sell their idea and so forth, so they were kind of able to pick our brain and, and so forth. So, I just wanted to say thank you to those two students. I think they represented the Dover area school district very, very well yesterday with their peers. And as Mr. Eifert said, snow is coming tomorrow and I, you know, every hour I receive three weather reports and I gladly send them out to my other, so they can share in my pain of the most received email of the day was from the National Weather Service. So, I just remind parents, you're setting your alarms, kids are coming to school tomorrow. So, I've received several requests and calls about that. We will monitor the weather as we always do throughout the morning and things like that, so if we are anticipating anything that's unsafe, the soonest we, you know, we will be on the line and we will do the global connects if there's any changes in the pattern or if we anticipate anything happening sooner rather than later. So, as I said Tuesday, we will always side on the air of caution and safety, so not only do we want to make sure our kids get home, but we also take a look at the bus drivers and the other adults and making sure that they get in in a timely manner, especially if they have families. But I will say at this time, you're coming to school and I look forward to seeing everybody in school tomorrow. If any decisions will be made, just make sure to watch the local weather station, listen to the radio. And I also put this reminder out there, too, our global connect system is only as good as the information you give us, so parents, please make sure that if you have changed your numbers, cell numbers, home numbers, if that isn't changed at the school level, I get the crazy emails of, why are you calling me? I don't have any kids in the district and, you know, you're leaving me a message on my machine that school's closing early or what have you. So, I will say, please, you know, remind your neighbors, remind everybody that, you know, I'm only able to communicate with you as well as your, you know, as accurate as the information is, so please make sure, like I said, if things change, you let the school know so that we can change it in our system, so those are my updates.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Terry from the board?
Who would be the proper person to contact with any of those changes? Does Amy take care of those?
No, that's each one of the schools, so they would just need to take it into the secretary and so forth. So, I imagine if the kids brought in a note and gave it to their teachers, the teachers could send it down to the office and the secretaries just go into, into SMS and they, they change everything through that, or MMS, sorry.
Any other questions?
Let me see, I want to teach you that, that's where, the local building is where the data gets modified, but then, is it always, every week then?
It gets uploaded.
The system itself gets the update, so even though we might put it in, it still takes a little bit of time for the district and at least the end of that meeting, then the district will be updated and changed.
But everything should go to the local building. Thanks.
Anything else?
So, at this point, Mr. Terry, are, are all activities on district property canceled for the weekend?
Yeah, every, anything after five o'clock tomorrow has been canceled, so we're asking, we're keeping all buildings closed until Monday.
Okay.
Because if we take a look at the weather forecast now, it is to snow throughout Saturday and even though some of our crews will come in Saturday, they're going to need all day Sunday to clear our lots and make sure things are clear. So, once again, we've already, there are games going on right now that were supposed to happen tomorrow, they're actually at the high school now playing basketball and things of that nature. All of the tournaments that were at state level have been, already been canceled, so chair, for example, will be next weekend, not this weekend, so we're asking everyone to please stay off school lots, school properties, so that when Sunday rolls around, we're able to clear out the lots and get them ready for buses on Monday.
Anything else for Mr. Terry? Okay, hearing none, our next section is miscellaneous. Do any board members have any other items they wish to discuss tonight?
Yes, I got two. The information we got the other evening on the financial situation, I thought was very interesting, but we do have three accounts and it was all lumped together, which makes it look like we have a lot of money on hand and there's some that we can't use because it's for the bonds and I just thought it'd be nice if he would just had that in his report and also that we do have a substantial debt. I just thought that was, would have been nice if he would have included that because that way people don't think we're sitting on eighteen million dollars here when we're actually not. And the other comment is, and it's not, then we changed the system, but I just feel as for people here, that we kind of shortened information up too much on Tuesday night as if you were looking for information and we went through the consent vote, we voted all that consent, but if you didn't have any information before, you didn't find nothing out here and that's just one person's opinion.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I, last evening, Mr. Cook and myself went to the York Adams Academy graduation. We watched four of our students from Dover graduate with other members of the schools. They had three students, one from Littlestown, one from Dallas Town, one from York Suburban that spoke, which were those, that when those students speak, it's very enlightening, because we had one student that spoke, had lost his father seven years ago and it was difficult for him to do the, do the speech last night, but he made it through. But all three of them were so grateful that, for the schools to, that they had a chance to get their diploma by going to York Adams Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Emme.
I'd like to, to echo Terry's comments there, it's, you go there, you don't know any of the kids, but when you listen to the stories and you realize that was an avenue for them to succeed where maybe they couldn't connect at the local district for whatever reason and you listen to some of those stories, it's, it's very tugging on your heart. So, if you get a chance next year to do that, it's well worth your time. I enjoyed it, so appreciate the invitation, Terry.
Well, there'll be another graduation coming up at the end of the school year, so.
Do they go to school all year round, that they have a graduation now?
They, they, they got their credits in, so they, it's just like graduating here early in January.
Oh, okay.
So, it's the same thing, they get their credits in and.
Anybody else?
If I could, if I could just ask if we could afford Ms. Jackson an opportunity to, to brief us a little bit on the, of what they've been working on curriculum?
Certainly.
Jamie, I lost my notes, so I didn't, I couldn't even begin to tell them what we were talking about, so.
Okay, we did a little, we had a discussion about some of the initiatives that we are doing and some of the things that we've already put into place and projected going forward. We spent some time discussing interactive read-alouds and the initiative we put into place with them already, K through twelve. We talked about foundations, which is another program that is K through two. We've had all teachers trained, either refresher and/or new training and that is being implemented this year. We have been looking at a true balanced literacy approach and what elements, which is why you see the interactive read-aloud, which is part of a true balanced literacy program. Foundations is also part of that in the phonics and vocabulary. We also talked about some future things that we're looking at in our intermediate school. We are using collections in seventh and eighth grade and we're looking at, do we need to expand that six through twelve along with its sister or younger group, which is Journeys, K through five, so that our district can have a true initiative, K through twelve for ELA that matches a, a more structured balanced literacy program. And if there's, you know, so we have some people coming in along with committees that we will bring teachers, administrators and, to come in and they will do a presentation. We have two programs coming in, they'll do it simultaneously, we'll switch and then we'll also look at what we need to do for the secondary schools. We're trying very hard, as we have said before, to make sure that we are looking at a continuum for our students that keeps going, K through twelve, not just a piece here and a piece here. We have also rolled out Collins Writing, K to twelve, type one, type two and ten percent. So, we also are talking with them about having them come in in March, Dr. Collins, to do a district walkthrough and work with us and the administrators just to see where we're at. We're also looking at scheduling him two days at the front of our professional development in August, so we can move that forward. So, we've done training, we took a team before, we've done turnaround training, we've really been trying to do a lot of that, what we, I call it a slow roll, because you don't want to just put everything on them, so we've been trying to do it in pieces very strategically so that we can really help our students have a natural change. We've had everyday math in K through five, this year we implemented CMP three in grade six through eight, so that is another area where we are continuing to really develop our district and the curriculum.
Foss kits?
Oh, we just finished, that's right, we just had the SAS Institute the other day for K to eight teachers and that was very successful. We brought a team together and people were able to select what professional development they wanted to attend. We had an overview, so we were all there, K to eight, and then there were seven sessions and teachers could individually sign up for which one they wanted to do. SAS is the Standards Aligned System, that is part of Pennsylvania Department of Education, the website that has all the standards, curriculum frameworks, so teachers actually were able to sign up for what they wanted to do. We also had fantastic vocabulary sessions, I'm being told from Steve Walk on a regular basis. And, so we had, and ELA shifts and different things like that, but teachers were able to select and we have received some excellent feedback and I think all of our administrators would agree with that. What did I miss, team?
I can say foss.
We've also.
All of the science foss kits, yes, we have ordered those. So, they are the, you know that we use Pearson Interactive Science, which is a program that they can do a lot with the interactive board, but there was not actually the application or the hands-on. So, we have ordered kits, K through eight, that are being implemented again to build that continuum and they're in use now. We've been doing a lot. Did I miss anything that we talked about? Kathy?
I have a question.
Oh, no.
What company manufactures collections?
Harcourt.
Harcourt, I was going to say Hooten Missland, I knew that was right, Harcourt, yes. I knew it wasn't.
And Kathy, just, you know, it was a program that we had purchased at least a year and a half ago, it's just been sitting, so we decided to implement it, so it gets really good reviews, it is rigorous, it's tough, it's, it's, it's a big difference than what they were using in terms of elements of literature, so, you know, one of the reasons, as a board, it was approved almost two years ago and it's been sitting.
Yes.
So, and we spent a lot of money to get that in, so the idea was to make sure that we implemented it and we did it, I think, coming back. we implemented it, and we did it, I think, coming back. December 1st was kind of our initial date of saying, all right, we're going to stop doing elements, and we're going to move into collections. The same thing with CMP 3. It had been a program that we'd purchased maybe two, maybe three years ago, and it was sitting in the trailer. So, we brought those back over and began to implement them, too. So, we thought, obviously, at some point in time, someone had done the initial research to make sure that they would, that the district should purchase them. That way, we wanted to begin to implement them to see if they were what the research had said. So, little shift and a little change, and, you know, there's always some uncomfortable feelings when you go from one program that you've been doing for a while, and now you've got to do something new. But we are implementing those particular new programs at the IS.
Anything else from board members?
I have a question. Either Mr. Cherry or Dave could answer. We're using Crabtree Roar Ball for that feasibility study. Okay, they're doing it for nothing, but is there some kind of like a tripwire here that we're going to set off that if they do any building for us that we, I mean, if we do any building, we have to use them?
No.
No, this is all free and clear?
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. We now have our second public comment period. This would be for items on or off the agenda. So, if you have anything you'd like to say, feel free to come forward to the microphones. Okay, seeing nobody moving, we'll move on to the next item. We do have our next board meeting would be February 16th. That's a Tuesday. At 7:00 PM, that will be the board action meeting. Do not have anything beyond that. Do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Make a motion.
Second, anybody?
I'll second.
All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those who say no, we're adjourned. Thank you.